Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Harrison, if you'd like, we can dive right in to the next hearing.
All right. Thank you and good evening again, Council President-elect, Vice President Middleton, Chairman Schleifer, and Vice Chairman Burnett, and members of the council. Thank you again for the opportunity to present this evening. Let me begin by giving a brief overview of the current crime situation. As of today, we're seeing year-to-date reductions in total property crime by 30%, including 32% reductions in robberies, 27% reductions in burglaries, 34% reduction in larcenies, 22% reductions in auto thefts.
Thank you.
All right? All of that's good news, and that's welcome. However, while total violent crime is down a total of 19%, of course homicides and non-fatal shootings still remain extremely challenging. We're currently down 3% in homicides and down 6% in the number of non-fatal shooting victims. But let me be very clear. This is only dissemination of information and certainly not touting our celebration of this information, considering how hard or how bad our murder rate and shooting rate were last year. However, it's important to highlight where we are and then compare it to what's happening elsewhere in the country. For example, the major city chiefs associations surveyed nearly 70 largest police departments in America, and all report that through the third quarter of this year homicides are up 29%, and then aggravated assaults, which include non-fatal shootings, are up over 10%. Of those 69 cities, Baltimore is only one of 10 showing a decrease in total violent crime, namely murder, shootings, and robberies, and then only one of three showing decreases in all the crime categories. Now, most of the other departments are showing sharp increases in most of, if not all, the crime categories. And again, this is not touting or celebrating this information, but rather always working to understand where we are and what we need to do to improve. Well, as I said during our previous hearing, I'd rather be down than up. And the same goes that I'd rather be going against this national trend than seeing us following along with it. Those cities are now experiencing dissimilar forms of social reckoning and the familiar surge of violence that Baltimore experienced back in 2015 and the one that unfortunately we're still in the midst of seeing. However, those cities and those departments are in the infancy of their reform efforts, while we are well ahead of the curve in comparison. Now, while we're seeing some modest progress, let me assure you that it is not good enough for me, it is not good enough for my executive team, it's not good enough for any of my commanders, I know it's not good enough for Mayor Lex Scott, or for the rest of the council, all the residents who you all represent. So this Thursday, we'll celebrate Thanksgiving, COVID notwithstanding. It's usually an occasion to be with family, even if it's only virtually this year. And that is what I am sure many others are going to do and are thankful for, that we get to be with our loved ones. However, as we celebrate, we do so knowing that for far too many families in Baltimore, this will not be the case. That is because this week, we mark another event, one we do not celebrate, or rather one we solemnly recognize as the grim and somber occasion for which it signifies. We saw the 300th homicide record in the city this year. We do so for the sixth straight year in a row. This culture of violence, specifically gun violence, has left a lot of empty chairs around the Thanksgiving dinner table, tragically thousands of them. So where do we go from here? And how do we make further and more significant reductions in the rate of homicides and shootings? You've heard me say many times, as well as our mayor, let's speak about the importance of really being focused on the bad actors committing these crimes and the focus deterrence and group violence intervention strategies. As an update, you'll see on the Board of Estimates agenda tomorrow, the ratification of an agreement with Northeastern University, who provide technical assistance and subject matter expertise in the development, implementation, and evaluation of this upcoming program. The board will also accept several grant awards to fund the first year of this program. So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Abel Foundation, Johns Hopkins University, the Baltimore Community Foundation for stepping up and funding this important initiative. So is focus deterrence the strategy that will help us make further reductions in violent crime, namely shootings and murders? It's certainly one component of it. This strategy incorporates the five pillars of prevention, intervention, rehabilitation, reentry, and targeted enforcement. And within it, it will assist us in better focusing our efforts around most at-risk individuals so that we can break the cycle and culture of violence and retribution. But focus deterrence is only one part of a larger strategy. You hear me talk all the time about reform, and I often get criticized sometimes for perhaps focusing, what some would say too much on our consent decree, or changing the culture of the department. But focusing on reform allows us to rebuild the trust of the communities we serve. It ensures we're policing fairly, equitably, and constitutionally. Most importantly, it ensures we are managing our resources as efficiently and effectively as possible. All of our reform efforts will lead to a better-run department that will in turn be able to be more effective and prevent, deter, and reduce crime in our neighborhoods. For example, our new records management system will not only keep track of our department's operations, but it will allow us to comply with the mandates of the consent decree and increase our case management capabilities, which will lead to better managed, stronger cases in court. When we talk about better training, yes, it's a mandate of the consent decree, but it's also not just some academic exercise. It's designed to ensure we're giving officers the most effective tools and overall approaches, well as the confidence that they need so that they can go out and do their job properly and productive. Since the beginning of the training of last year, we've received overwhelmingly positive feedback on our stop, search, and arrest training, with some officers calling it the best training they've ever received with BPD. When I talk about overtime reform, yes, one purpose for it is being good fiscal stores of the taxpayer dollar, but it also allows us to focus our scarce resources and use them where operationally it makes the most impact and ensures that we're not overworking our officers and asking too much. Crime reduction and department transformation are not mutually exclusive, but rather are two parts of a greater whole. As we continue to make these necessary advancements, modernizations, and reforms, BPD will continue to transform into a world-class department able to better address crime in our neighborhoods. So I'd like to wish you and your families and everyone in the city of Baltimore a very happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving. And right now, I'll hand the presentation over to my Deputy Commissioner of Operations, Michael Sullivan, and Colonel Worley in Bristol, according to further detail on the current crime situation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Councilman Schleifer and Mayor Lex. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to present these crime statistics that we have experienced this year. You'll see this first slide that's up speaks to what the Commissioner spoke to in his opening remarks. You'll see that these slides started from last Saturday, or ended last Saturday, the 21st. I just want to make that clear, that's when the date occurred. I'm going to focus on just those two areas where we identify that they're in the red. If you remember, at the start of COVID, we had several pattern cases of residential robberies that drove up that number high. We've made several arrests and have been getting closer and closer to getting that number in the black as well. We also had a couple of pattern cases. You'll see the arson's category, where we're three cases over where we were last year, and those cases we were able to make arrests to. At this point, you can go through district by district, and we can pass it over to Colonel Worley if that's what you would like.
Yeah, you don't need to go line by line, district by district, but if you can just give an overview?
Yeah, we can just touch on the areas that were up in each district, and I'll pass it over to Colonel Worley to just give a high-level overview of the districts.
Yep, good evening. The only area that we're up in in the year-to-date in the central are the homicides, and that's because they had a really good year last year. They have 14 homicides this year compared to 12 last year. They are by far the lowest in the city. And then they have arson's nine compared to five last year, which is still a minimal number. Everything else is in the green, and they're having a really good year, especially with street robberies are down 54% in the central district. So they're doing well with their robberies. Moving on to the southeast, the areas that are up are, the rates are up 42% in the southeast, and then the home invasions are up 29%. That's the area where we've seen a huge increase in the southeast, but they were up as high as 70 to 80% year-to-date. And May the 2nd, we were 67% up in home invasions. And as of the 21st, we're only 24% up. It's still up, but we've cut that dramatically recently, and that's because some really good arrests from, we were having Spanish families being targeted. We made some good arrests in there, and we were able to put some people away with that. So do you have any other questions about those two, or you want me to just continue?
Now, you can continue, unless a member of the committee has a specific question about that, you can just probably jump in.
I do. So this is Councilwoman Shannon Sneed. And so in our area in the southeast, where some of the jump was, I felt like enough information wasn't being released to the area to let neighbors and members know, since we're not having the monthly police meetings at the district. I think it would be really helpful if we can get some of this information out to the president to make them aware of what's going on and just, you know, being cognate of their areas, especially as we move into the holiday season when we know crime sometimes increases around this time.
Yes, I agree. They should be putting stuff out on their Facebook page and communicating with the community council presidents and everyone and every neighborhood president. The district commanders should be sending out information and putting stuff on all the social media networks advising of, this is a time of year when their street robberies increase. But just to give you a quick update, I went back and looked, and on May the 2nd, the northeast was 211% up in home invasions, and they've come all the way down to where they're only 29% up. So they have done a really good job with that. I will make sure the major and captain there are communicating a great deal with the community. I know the major is out for a week, but the captain is there. I spoke to her. As a matter of fact, I just got a text from her a little while ago.
It reminds people too that due to COVID, a lot of our seniors are not able to go to these meetings, and there is a technology divide. Some have to commute there, or I'm getting feedback. And so they're not able to have the same access because some of our seniors, many of our seniors are not on Facebook, they're not going to check social media because they're not there. So I just want to make sure we recognize that there is definitely a digital divide between those, between the older seniors as well, since they're not able to go to those community meetings. And so that's all like, it's helpful if they can pick up the phone and call some of these presidents, because they still, many of the seniors in our communities still have that old-fashioned phone tree working when they get on the phone and they talk to one another and they pass messages that way. So I'm just asking if you guys can also pick up the phone and call some of these senior presidents so they can let our community members know what's going on.
This is Commissioner Harrison. We're happy to set those kinds of protocols up, not just for your district, but for all of them, so that we can, you know, we can put the information out in real time through technology, but for those that are part of the digital divide, we can find the protocol to make sure everybody is connected, and we're happy to do that.
Thanks.
Commissioner, on that point also to echo Councilwoman Sneed's sentiments, this is something that has come up in previous hearings where we need to increase the engagement with the community, especially during COVID, when community meetings and other meetings aren't really taking place. And an issue had come up and was brought, I brought to this committee hearing last month, and I think two months ago as well, that some of the CRC meetings are not open to the public and are rather by invitation only. And so what I would ask is that if there's community relations council meetings, which people don't differentiate between the police department and, you know, those operating it, if they're not doing what they're designated to do, which is to build relationships between the community and the police, I would just say that maybe we go ahead with Councilwoman Sneed's idea and hold monthly meetings for each district, for each police district, and have the council people in each one of those districts be able to open those meetings up and invite everybody to come and get a monthly briefing from their captains and commanders and have that open to the public.
That's something I've certainly been talking with my commanders about. That's something we've talked to the CRC presidents about. As a matter of fact, at our last, you know, I meet with the CRC presidents every month. And at our most recent meeting, we did a poll of all of them to find out how the meetings have begun going. Most have not even been having meetings this year. Some have, but some have not. And some have had them in recent weeks or months, but certainly when COVID first started, there was probably a long period where there were no meetings by some of them and only a few meetings by some of them. So it's something that we certainly want to design to make sure everybody is connected and there's good information flow to those through technology and for those who don't use technology.
All right, and I think that it's just counterproductive if we have majors and captains participating in meetings that were designated to build relationships between the community and the police department, and those meetings are by invitation only. That's counterproductive. And so I think that the majors and those captains, you know, if people want to have a private meeting with them, that's their prerogative. People are entitled to request those meetings from the majors and the captains, and they can schedule them accordingly. But I think meetings that are designated to be wide open to the community need to do just that. And so I'm not understanding why the majors and captains would even go into those meetings and provide crime briefings and engage with activity that's basically silencing a lot of voices in the community and not allowing engagement for those that are interested in engaging.
Got it. Yes, sir.
And I just want to add, this is Councilwoman Shannon Sneed again. Our contact in the eastern did send out an email for us to start meeting, and they said Zoom. And I said, that's fine, because people can, you know, the seniors can also jump on the phone lines when they do Zoom, there's a line for phones. But it just also lets, let us know that certain areas are on the radar, where I'm getting a lot of calls for certain areas like Patterson Park in Biddle and Milton-Mofford. And so those meetings just help connect the dots with keeping those people informed. Thank you.
Yeah, and we did something yesterday that Michelle put together and Lindsay put together for us. We have a new major and a new captain in the northeast, and we did a Zoom call, and they had over 50 participants in it, and it only lasted one hour. So that, I really liked that. I was on the whole time, and I think we're going to have the district commanders each put one of those together, and it had every community president was invited to come to that. And I think as long as we keep it to a point, a reasonable amount of time, that's not a big ask of our district commanders.
Can you tell, does this need again, can you tell us how many actually called in? Was this Zoom in call-in?
Yes, it was both. They could have either one. Most of them were on Zoom, but there were several people that called in. There were some challenges with the Zoom, but it went by really well, and it turned out really, really well. It was a really good hour, and then the district commander stayed on for about 15 or 20 minutes later and took all the questions that they had. They were able to type their questions or ask them right on the Zoom, but we gave both options.
Perfect. Yay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Colonel, do you want to finish your presentation?
Yeah, moving into the eastern, the residential robberies in the eastern are up as well. They're up 56%. The commercial robberies are up slightly, 2. Enforcable rates were up 12%. Rates even were down. And then your miscellaneous is six to five. Those are smaller numbers, but the residential robberies are up. The eastern and the southeast is where we were getting hit earlier. And the big one was when we made a couple arrests, all those numbers have come down dramatically, and then arson is up 19 compared to six. All right, moving on to the northeast, your homicides are up 9%. Three more homicides this year than they had last year. The residential robberies are up in the northeast as well, which they were up in almost every district thus far, except for the central. They're leading in most of your robbery categories. And your ag assaults are up 3%. They've been battling a little bit with the aggravated assaults for a little bit of time, and majority, well, about a third of those are domestic-related. 261 of the 721 are domestic-related. The northern, they've had a tough year, but the reason they had such a tough year is for the last five or six years, their crime categories have gone down to double digits. So it's hard to keep that downward trend in the double digits. Their homicides are up slightly, 22 to 19. Shootings are up slightly, 54 to 46. They've struggled in every crime, I mean, every robbery category, with the exception of the street robberies, which are down significantly, that keeps them down for the year 15%. Their ag assaults have also increased 8%, and their arsons are up 6% compared to 3%. Northwest, they've recovered nicely. At one point, they were up in homicides, they're now down 42 compared to 39, which still is not a celebration, but at least it's lower than it was last year. Your residential robberies, just like everything, and the home invasions in the northwest are up, just like all the rest of the districts. The other two robbery categories are up slightly, but as you see overall, every crime category is down except for those subcategories in the robberies and the rape categories. The western, they're having a pretty decent year, but their crime categories are down everything except for a couple of subcategories, and robberies are up slightly. The western is the district that's struggled the most this year with homicides and shootings. They've got 51 homicides compared to 46 last year, and they have 110 shootings compared to 79 last year, which is quite an increase. And that's the district that struggled with the violence all year, although their robberies are down, overall robberies are down, a couple of subcategories are up slightly. And then lastly, the southern, their robberies are up 34 to 25, I mean, I'm sorry, their homicides, 34 to 25. A couple of subcategories of the robberies are up, and their arsons are up slightly, but the southern is having a good year with the other high crime, I mean, violent crime categories. That takes care of the nine districts.
Colonel, I noticed like in the subcategories, and if I'm reading this incorrectly, please correct me, but I see how it says residential robberies are up 24%, but then when you go down to burglaries, they're down 27%. So are they simply considered robberies because there's people in the homes now because more people are working from home?
No, it's considered a robbery because there's some kind of personal contact with the victim. The burglaries, they just go into the homes and they steal items, but in the robberies, they have to have some kind of contact where they take the property by force from the individual.
Right, so, no, I understand that. I'm asking more specifically, the fact that people are home during the day, is that to explain the increase in the residential robberies? Obviously, if people weren't home while it's being robbed, it would just be a burglary.
Yes, very well could be, because it is more people are home, so we're running, we're getting into more confrontations with people. But for the most part, it was a targeted crew of people that were doing home invasions earlier in the year that happened. And then there's some domestic ones as well where they forced themselves in, but you're absolutely right. It's a...
What, as far as that time that you were talking about, because I mean, obviously I see it happening also in the northwest, what time of day were those residential robberies occurring?
And where, throughout the city or during the...
Yeah, the increase that you were referencing, were those daytime or nighttime?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was, the deputy was telling me something about the, what you, one of the biggest things that you run into when you have a residential robbery, and I'll get to you, I didn't forget your question, sir, but they were happening all different times, but when you run into with the residential robberies, you run into when you go into a house, if there's four or five people, that's four or five separate robbery. So those numbers can escalate pretty quickly. But for the most part, I believe when we were getting hit with the Spanish, they were targeting Spanish families, and that one was, I believe, during the day and early morning pattern. But that one has been solved. We actually made arrests on those, and they were hitting Baltimore County with that as well, because Baltimore County helped us solve those issues. They were just like, sort of like the carjacking thing with the, that was going back and forth with the county. They were hitting both of us, and we worked together to put both of those patterns down.
Gotcha. And is that, I know this has come up before in the past, but is that something that you guys were taking a look at as far as reporting each one of those as separate robberies as opposed to just per incident in a residence?
Well, it's a UCR. It's the way it has to be recorded. Uniform crime reporting by the FBI has to count each individual as a robbery victim, but we know, like, if it was one house and there was four victims, we know that, that there were multiple victims, but when you count the numbers, you got to count each person who was robbed as a separate victim.
Gotcha. Okay, and also in the, in the report, there's, it also showing how narcotics arrests are down, I think it was like 55%. Trying to find that slide. Why, why are, no, it's more than 55%, why are the arrests down so much? And are those arrests people who are distributing, or those arrests were typically people who just had narcotics on them?
The vast majority, the vast majority of those are misdemeanor arrests that are occurring. And if you recall, at the start of the COVID experience, there were certain crimes that were not being prosecuted. So with that, that's where we see the big drop, and it's generally in the misdemeanor crime category for possession.
And do you have this broken down by possession versus distribution?
I do. I'll ask Colonel Herzog, I believe he has those details, and he can speak to it.
Excuse me, somebody jumping in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep, so as far as the exact numbers go, we know based on the state's attorney's office, they provided data that misdemeanor drug arrests are down by 75% this year, and that's based on the policies that were put in place regarding the COVID procedures. So it's down, and misdemeanor drug arrests are down by 75% this year.
And so these, this dramatic reduction of arrests, are those misdemeanor ones, or are those also, is there also a reduction in distribution arrests?
So we know that the majority of the significant reduction is in the misdemeanor arrests, and, you know, as well as felony as well, but the significant reduction is in the misdemeanor arrests.
Okay. Well, I can tell you, we definitely feel it as far as the distribution side, because there's the same spots continue to be problematic. I know that in my council district, but also I hear from my colleagues, certain locations in their council districts as well. Before we go into some more questions, is there any members of the committee that have any questions on this?
Chairman, this is Councilman Pinkett. I have some questions.
Go ahead, Councilman Pinkett.
Colonel Worley, just last month, I requested some, and received some information on a specific four-block radius around, from Cary and Cumberland in the western district. And when I looked at that data, over the past five years, just in that four-block area, we're averaging 14 homicides a year, so that's over one a month, 26 shootings a year, so that's more than two a month, over 100 robberies a year, almost 10 a month. Over a hundred robberies a year, almost ten a month. A hundred, a hundred and twenty-eight aggravated assaults a year. One carjacking a month. One commercial, one business robbed a month. Almost a hundred and twenty burglaries a year, just in this four blocks. And then when I look at the statistics that you gave even tonight, it looks like a quarter of the homicides in Western, a quarter of the shootings, a quarter of the robbing, robberies, a quarter of the aggravated assaults, burglaries, carjackings, all happen in this four-block area. How do we, for so many years, you know? I mean, if, if we controlled that four blocks, it would change West Baltimore. I, I, what, what, I guess, what are we doing? What, what are we not doing? How, how do we change this? I mean, we can't go every year with these same statistics in just this same four-block area.
Yeah, I, I agree, Councilman. Actually, I'm very familiar with that area. It was my post when I was an officer. Pency, Pency and North, I mean, Pency and Cumberland, Pency and North, that little area right there. We have officers assigned there every single day, twenty-four seven. Our K-nine unit is stationed. Basically, they are to park at Cumberland and Cary, I mean Cumberland and Pency, and they walk that area. Western has an officer station at North and Pency, and they walk that area. MTA has two officers that work that area. The Western has a district action team that is assigned to that area. A lot of the issues that we run into there are precipitated or, or link calls or other issues that the police department really can't control. Like the addiction, the addiction rate in that area is extremely high. The businesses there, we've, we've tried to close a couple of businesses there using the padlock, but we are unable to do that because we can't link it directly to their business. If it happens right in that area, there's not, we can't link it to a business. We can't close it because of the business. So we, we are throwing every resource we had at it. When we did the VRIs, we, we actually had all the other city agencies in there helping us. And we still utilize them, and we still have officers assigned there. It's just a hub for, so many people were in that, such, that small area. Almost every shooting or every incident we get there is something, an officer was right there around the corner, and they simply just wait for the officer to walk a half a block away, and, and we have an incident. It's frustrating. It's been frustrating for all of us, getting, trying to get a control of that small area. But you're exactly right, that we, we do have to get a control of that. We are putting more resources there. We're trying to use all the city wraparound services to help us.
Yeah, because, and, and I don't, I don't know what is the appropriate, you know, number of arrests, but, but when I looked at CDS arrest with, I guess, a felony charge in that same four-block area, it's ten arrests a month, so one every three days. And I, I, I mean, I just, it just seems like you could make a CDS arrest with felony charge like one every three hours in that four-block area, not one every three days.
Well, well, the felony charges, you actually have, the officer actually have, has to witness the person selling the drugs. If we, we could probably, and we, we have done in the past where we can make multiple possession cases, but those aren't being prosecuted. So it's, it's not, we, we basically can't do those. So the officer has to do observation and actually watch the dealer sell the product to the buyer before they can pretty much take action. They have to do a search and seizure warrant on the property. And as you know, there's a lot of businesses there. So if they go into the business, we have to prove that the business is complicit in, in the illegal activity to try to shut them down.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this isn't the form, but if we don't, if we don't figure out the, the prosecution along with the arrest and make certain that they're coordinated, I don't even, I don't even know how you all do your job, because you, you, you can't, if you, if you can't make those possession arrests, that area is gonna remain so lucrative. And then there's gonna be rivals coming in, trying to get some of that money, and it, and it's gonna stay violent. And so we, we gotta have everybody working together, from the state's attorney's office to BPD, to probation and parole, or we're, we're, we're not gonna solve this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other members of the committee have any questions?
This is Nate. I, I do have a question, because we're, we're talking about arrests, and I just, and I can hold off on this question to the end, but I saw the governor's press conference, and he was talking about making arrests during, you know, COVID and over the holidays. And it just brings up concerns to me, one, because here it is that we're talking about arrests being in our area over people who are actually doing crimes. And so I'm wondering, since the governor said he had the support of the local jurisdictions, has the commissioner and, I guess, the governor spoken about this? And will it be in patrols in Baltimore City for COVID and certain criminal crimes in Baltimore City?
So, so Councilmember, this is Commissioner Harrison. I have spoken with Colonel Jones, the superintendent of the state police. And he and I are coordinating state troopers coming into the city to help us with our social club task force in enforcing the governor's executive orders regarding, you know, COVID enforcement. Certainly, we have always said, you know, we wanna make sure people are voluntarily compliant. And if and when we need to take action against establishments like restaurants, bars, other businesses that are non-compliant, we will do that. But certainly, we can't, you know, nobody has the capacity to enforce and make arrests because people won't wear a mask out in public. So what we wanna do is educate our community and make sure we are enforcing, but getting people to voluntarily comply. And he's, he's sending troopers in, but the superintendent of the state police and I are coordinating. That's who I've spoken to, not directly with the governor. And we're on the same page about what we're gonna be doing regarding enforcing that executive order. And it, it's not going out just making arrests. It's, it's getting people to voluntarily comply.
Are you good, Councilman Snead?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Harrison, on that note also, relevant to an incident that took place moments before the previous hearing started, what, what is the, the rule within BPD for an officer who's not compliant with the mask mandate?
Well, we put out a memorandum that we want officers to follow the guidelines that came out of certainly the health department and our, our health commissioner, and from our police department about when and where to wear a mask. And we have been sending our compliance team in all of our districts and in all of our divisions to do random inspections and audits. And we've produced reports that we even presented to the judge, the monitors, and the DOJ just last week on those compliance and audit checks. Now, when we find people who are non-compliant, then, you know, we can begin progressive discipline on employees when we see that they're willfully violating. And, you know, but once we know that a person is willfully violating it, yeah, progressive discipline can be forthcoming, because we've given a mandate for people to do it. What we always have to do is to find out if the, if the mandate made its way down to the officer, and the officer actually knows that the mandate was given. You know, we feel confident that they do.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree. I know that at least in my council district, my majors in the police districts in my district do an excellent job at relaying that information and have been on top of that. And I've, I've personally witnessed compliance checks, because, you know, when they do roll calls and stuff in the parking lot, I've seen, I've seen them doing checks and going through that. So is there, is there something you can, you know, give an example on what some of this progression looks like? I mean, what kind of consequences we're talking about, or is it really a case by case?
It's, it's case by case. And, you know, it, you know, we don't, we don't jump straight to termination. Certainly, there are counseling sessions and supervisory discussions and counseling sessions and redirections that we can do. And when there's repeat violations, you know, we can, we can progressively move to, to, you know, more progressive discipline. But what we wanna do is condition our employees to that. Don't wanna, you know, really turn this into a disciplinary thing. We want this to be a health, a health issue and for people to comply because of health reasons. And listen, the city safeties are, is actually helping us with these audit checks. And so compliance and the safeties are going around and, and doing that. What we're finding is that when we first started, we found some non-compliance. But as we educated more members of our department, the audits began to look a lot better. And, and now we're finding more often than not, people are actually complying.
Okay, thank you. And one, one last thing that I have that was not included in the presentation and has been a priority of this committee since, since the start, has been the clearance rates. So if you can have somebody just go through our year-to-date clearance rates.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have my Colonel go through the clearance rates. But let me just, let me say this to all of you. When, you know, I had some of the issues with some of the exceptional clearances. And I actually commissioned an audit by the consent decree monitoring team, by way of our compliance team. And that audit went on for a couple of months. And so to make sure we were above board and to make sure with regard to exceptional clearances, we were following UCR guidelines and making sure we were in compliance, I wanted to make sure that we were above board, so I commissioned that audit. And our, our compliance team, but with the monitors overseeing them, conducted that audit. While we can't go into the results, because we just recently shared it with the consent decree monitoring team, you know, we can't tell you that it's complete. We can't tell you that the monitors are reviewing the results.
Okay. Which, which Colonel do you have presenting?
Good afternoon, I'm sorry, good evening, this is Colonel Briscoe speaking.
Hi, Colonel.
Um, myself and Colonel Worley are gonna tag-team this, because we both have both sides at this point, if you will. So if, if I may, so as a day, the clearance rate for, the UCR clearance rate for homicide is at thirty-nine percent. The clearance rate for our sexual offenses is at.
Can you, Colonel, I'm sorry to interrupt, can you also just give the year-to-date, so this year and last year, by comparison?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
Just bear with me one moment. So our year-to-date clearance today is at thirty-nine percent. This time last year, we were at thirty-one percent. For the case of clearance rate for rape, we're at forty percent. I'm sorry, our sex offense, we're at forty, forty percent. Last year, we were at forty-six percent. For our child abuse clearance rate, we're at seventeen percent year-to-date. And we were at thirty-one percent this time last year. For our arson cases, we are at thirty-four percent this year. In twenty-nineteen, we were at forty-four percent. For our economic crimes, we're at thirty-seven percent in twenty-twenty and at thirty-two percent in twenty-nineteen, respectfully. And I will turn it over to Colonel Worley to provide the additional clearance rates.
Yes, yes, sir. I can, I can, I don't have the breakdown from the clearance rates from last year, but I can give you what this, what, I have it broke down by district, but I know the clearance rate for the shootings is pretty similar to what it was last year. They're sitting right now, they're sitting at twenty percent. The citywide clearance rate for robberies is thirty percent. The citywide clearance rate for burglaries is nineteen percent. And for ag assaults is thirty, thirty-seven percent. Obviously, a couple of districts are doing a little better than others. And I can get into those if you, if you'd like, but the, the overall, the clearance rates for robberies and burglaries is above the national average.
For robberies and burglaries, you're saying?
Yes, or above the national average.
And I assume we're pointing that out, because, and probably in all the other categories, it's below the average?
Ag assaults is pretty close. It's right around forty percent. And the, our, our rate is thirty-seven percent. The shooting, yes, is, is the national average, I, I believe, is right around twenty-five to thirty percent. But I'm not.
And what, what about with, with homicides?
Are you asking about the, the national average?
Yes, yes.
Jack, do you have that in front of you?
Yes, ma'am. And so the national average was fifty-nine and a half percent last year, so almost sixty percent.
And we're at, what are we at right now, you said?
Thirty-nine.
What was that?
Thirty-nine percent.
Right, so I mean, you know, this is, this has been an ongoing issue.
Can I jump in one, can I jump in one second, Councilman?
Sure.
The, the, just keep in mind, there's a lot of underlying context that we never really get to talk about when we talk about national averages, because the, the average police department in America, among the eighteen thousand police departments, is under twenty police officers. And so the national average is calculated with the seventy biggest police departments that have one thousand or more, which there's only seventy. The rest of the department, the rest of the country, is made up of the eighteen thousand, but most departments are under a hundred, but most in the small rural areas are either under twenty. And they actually contribute to the national average. So it is, it's a, it's, it's, I don't want you to think we're making excuses, because we don't, we need to be, be a lot higher. But I think it's comparing big cities to big cities is more applicable than comparing big cities to the rest of the country. Because it, you know, countries that have one, perhaps one murder a year and solve it are at a hundred percent. So we, we certainly need to improve. There's no, look, don't, don't, please don't mishear me. We need great improvement, but thinking about the national average, I just wanted to give that context.
Right, and I, I, I hear you. I hear you on that. I mean, the thing that's more, I was just asking them more for context to understand the, the, the scope, and, and I certainly get that. The bigger concern for me is that somebody has a sixty-one percent chance of getting away with murder in Baltimore City. And so as you can imagine and you see, we're dealing with a lot of the same offenders, these, these violent repeat offenders. And so, you know, when we have a sixty-one percent chance, when you solve each one of those, it's not just solving that one crime. Often, I'm sure you guys find there's connections to multiple other crimes. I know, I know that's the case. But in addition to that, it also is taking a violent repeat offender who may be responsible for multiple shootings and multiple homicides off the street. And so, you know, this is something I've been talking about since the first time you and I met. And so what, what are we doing now to, to get those clearance rates up in a significant manner to actually bring closure to the victims, witnesses, and communities that, that are being plagued by these shootings, homicides, and other violent crimes?
Well, first of all, thank you for that. We fully agree. We had to create the right staffing model within homicide. And, you know, we decentralized our shooting investigations out to the districts from the centralized approach mid-year last year. But enhancing the staffing, we've, we've now added fourteen more members to the homicide unit, but we also rearranged the, the, the resource allocation and how we were deploying. Rather than deploying the majority by day, we've now equalized and leveledized the staffing across the twenty-four hour for response to homicide, but making sure we can actually handle the cases that are coming in and the, the distribution of the cases per detective. Then we're working on making sure we train all of them through actual formal training. We have historically relied on on-the-job training by pairing new detectives up with senior detectives. But now we wanna make sure through our public safety partnership that we bring on formal training to make sure everyone has the basic and the advanced courses in homicide investigations. And then there's just making sure we produce great cases, working with our state attorney, working with our federal partners, and utilizing the federal resources to connect all of these cases, as you talked about earlier. Some of these perpetrators have committed multiple offenses. And using that data to make sure that we're not just clearing the cases, but bringing justice to victims.
Right, and so I pointed it out in, in previous years in the budget hearings. And this is also, this is prior to some different turnover in executive leadership. And so I wanted to point that out, that it's not necessarily reflective on the current, the current leadership, but, you know, there was an increase of seventeen million dollars directed towards that department. And I pointed that out in last year's budget, here, and how the clearance rates had actually gone down. And that was after seventeen million. And that was after a seventeen million dollar increase in that department. So when you say getting new people in there and getting them trained properly, I mean, are we now with the new people you've put in there at the staffing level that you feel is appropriate? Or is there still a number of detectives that you feel is still necessary to get into that department and trained in order to start seeing the results that, that we're expecting? You're muted. You're muted, Commissioner.
I believe we're still understaffed and we have a protocol about how we enhance staffing, not just there, but everywhere in the department. But we're working to bring, like I said, formal training to the homicide unit for those who've never had formal training and are the advanced courses. I still believe we're understaffed to get us at the case-per-detective ratio where we want to be. But, you know, as we have this influx of homicides that come in, sometimes when we get there, just a surge of homicides would put you out of balance all over again.
And what is that case-per-detective number?
Well, the acceptable number is six to one, and I think we hover slightly above six. Six, six new cases a year per detective. And if I'm correct, if I'm not correct, please correct me either, Colonel.
Yes, sir. I think, I think part of it is also making sure that in, in determining that case load, that we have the ability for detectives to be able to handle the case and lead the case. Part of it is making sure they're properly trained to do so. So we can get you those.
And so what, what amount of more resources are needed in that, in that division in order to get the ratio that, that you're referencing?
Well, it's, it's, it's resources, but it's also skill set. And it's time that we need to bring detectives up to a skill set level where they can, you know, be competent enough to handle those cases on their own without, without partnering with someone and oversee them. That's number one. But it's also time that we need because we're also working to bring people in to staff up public integrity, to staff up sexual assault investigations, to staff up patrol. And, and so we're constantly making those assessments and readjusting based on vacancies, based on promotions to backfill vacant promotions. And then making sure we move people into specialized assignments like homicide, sex crimes, SWAT, public integrity when vacancies arrive there and we didn't have shortages. So we're doing the same, the same thing in every section of the department all the time.
Is this in connection, is this in connection with the, with the staffing study that had been done? Doesn't it just outline a specific number so that we have a ballpark target?
It does outline, it does outline a specific number so we have a ballpark target, but to arrive at that, we, we have a protocol to arrive at that as we bring on new recruits and they graduate and complete field training, we first backfill vacant positions that are vacated through promotions, then through specialized assignments. In the last iteration of, we had to put a number of people in sexual assault because we were drastically short there and out of compliance with the consent decree. And so in order to meet the consent decree compliance and not be held in non-compliance or in contempt, that was an action item that was immediate that we had to take. But we're always working to make sure when those recruits come online as officers, we look at how we increase the staffing in homicide along with some of the other units.
Gotcha. Is there any other committee members or members of the council that have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. Always a pleasure to see you and your staff. The three, you know, whether it's three hundred or or many, the homicides remain unrelenting in our city. The retaliation killings, just, just the rate of violent crime. I'm curious, just given that, you know, we're continuing to see during the pandemic, before the pandemic, such a high rate of crime, what is kind of the operating theory of what is driving our murder rate at the moment within the department? Is most of this about retaliation? What's kind of the, the theory that you all are operating under on why, you know, we're continuing to have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people lose their lives each year in our city?
Deputy Sullivan and Colonel Briscoe speak to it after me. What we're seeing is a, a number of these are drug deals gone bad, where someone was attempting to buy drugs from another person and it, it went bad and then violent. What we're also seeing are acquaintance killings, where people who know one another, you know, which is usually eighty percent of all murder victims anyway. Acquaintance kills, where people know one another and it escalates into a violent argument that turns violent and then fatal. That's number two. We do occasionally see domestic, which are different from acquaintance, but live in domestics, where, where one person kills another who's intimately tied to that person in some way. But we do see a lot of retaliations and people who are tied to one another through either the drug trade or some level of violence that took place between them in the past. And many of our shooting victims were shooting victims, previous shooting victims. And many of our perpetrators that we catch were shooting victims and tied to their victims in the past. So we know for a fact that there, there are, there are a high number of retaliatory shootings, acquaintance shootings and drug deals that are gone bad because one person tried to rob the other person of drugs in the middle of a drug deal. Instead of just consummating the drug deal, one tried to rob the other. And quite a few of our victims, I would even go as far to say, most of the victims that we find in homicides have a firearm on them, either were in the process of using it or were shot and killed right before they, they could use it.
Yeah. So to the point, Commissioner, and I would just, you know, reiterate the conversation you and I have had and that seems to remain relevant, that it, it just feels like, given what you just stated about the retaliatory killings and most of the killings being linked to drug deals gone bad, that, again, I, I just think that the way we've prosecuted the drug war, the way we've, the way we regulate substances in this city and in this country just continues to fail. I was in a health committee hearing this morning related to looking at emergency shelters and safe injection sites. It, it, it just feels like, given that so much of the killing that we see in Baltimore, where families lose their loved ones have to do with the way narcotics and other drugs are distributed, the underground economy and the way we chase it around, to, to me, it just points to a fundamental failure, systems failure in how we regulate these drugs. I mean, it, you know, it, we're, we're not seeing people killing each other over alcohol a, as much. I mean, there's still plenty of domestic violence that takes place alcohol-related, but just the level of death within our city, to me begs the question of if we keep doing the same thing over and over again, you know, are we really going to get a better outcome unless we change policies there? You're muted.
I wouldn't deny that there's some truth there. I'd probably even say that there's, that there's likely a lot to be done with what you just said, but I think the core point that I see that, you know, quite frankly, you know, all the chiefs around the country, what we talk about, the real issue is the, the willingness of the person to use a gun in violence and the availability of those guns and their willingness to use that gun, whether it's acquaintance, whether it's domestic, whether it's drugs, whether it's retaliation, or whether, you know, it's just two people who, who saw one another. It, it, because the decision to pull the trigger is not made when the trigger is pulled. The decision to pull the trigger is made when you grab that gun from under the bed, from under the house, and you walk away out that door with that gun. You know, you've predetermined that if you need it, you have it, you're willing to use it. And that is a culture that has grown, grown so strong that we have to really change the reason, change the people's minds about why they think they even need to carry it. And if, you know, that's the heavy lift that we have to do, what, what you said is absolutely true. But there's a whole way of thinking out there where these young men think that they have to have these guns and their, and their willingness to use them.
Councilman, can you?
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with that. Again, you know, we know that hurt people, hurt people. That's why focusing on trauma that people experiencing and that's why they, the focus determines on small number of folks who are consistently committing violent crimes in our city, I think is so important. But I, just to me, it again speaks to, and I'm sure other chiefs around the country similar dynamics, but just the continued, our continued failed policies when it comes to the drug war and the need to, to your point, really treat what is underlying so much of the, what you call cultural violence, which I think is people's trauma that gets reenacted onto others. But, you know, again, I appreciate your work and your commitment to our city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the committee or the council? Going once.
Chairman, I, I have two more questions.
Go ahead, Councilman. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Harrison, most, we, we often hear, and I think you said it even earlier, that we need to focus on the bad actors, those, I guess, repeat violent offenders and make certain that we target them. But it, it almost seems like every week, either through, you know, reports as relates to homicides or shootings, that there is a teen involved in so many of the recent, you know, shootings. Are they bad, are they the bad actors that we're talking about?
When I, when I say bad actors, I, I'm talking about people who are actually carrying the guns and pulling the trigger. The people who are pulling the trigger and committing the shootings, committing the robberies. Those, you know, committing the other crimes, those are, those are, you know, what we would call bad actors, people who are committing violent acts. So whether it's one person or it's two people together, you know, maybe there's a better terminology I could use, but just academically, we, we talk about people who are the, the, the core group of people committing bad acts.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the terminology. It just appears that if we're going after, that there are being, there are more bad, quote unquote, bad actors being either recruited or developed faster than we can go after, I guess, the more seasoned. And so if, if our, if our approach is to go after the repeat violent offenders and go after these bad actors, then we better hurry up because they're doing a better job of creating more bad actors than we are at getting, you know, the, the old ones off the street. That's my point.
Yeah, but that's, and that's a good point, but that's the whole, that's the whole principle focus of Focus the Terms. It's a two-part. It's not just going after the bad actors to, to hold them accountable for the bad acts, but it's also offering them an opportunity in their life away from violent crime. We have to actually give them and lead them to the opportunities of fixing their addiction, dealing with skills and jobs and education and housing and all the other things that if unaddressed will drive them toward crime, violence, violent crime specifically. And so that's what it is. It's a two-pronged approach. It's not just the heavy enforcement, but it's the wraparound services to actually give them a whole pathway away from it. And yes, but the first, the first pillar in Focus the Terms is prevention. And prevention speaks to the people who are not yet bad actors. It's to prevent the next generation from becoming bad actors. Intervention is for the bad actors. Intervention and enforcement is for the bad actors. And then there's rehabilitation and reentry to prevent people from going back and being repeat offenders and being reincarcerated over and over and over. So it, it's multi-pronged. And then with the mayor, you know, the, the incoming mayor's vision of, of wrapping the whole city services around it all and then pulling out faith-based, our academic institutions, our healthcare institutions, our nonprofits, pulling everybody out of the silos and make everybody a part of this team is, is, is the way we go. But you have to bring them to the opportunities. And for those that don't want it, then yeah, there's enforcement waiting for them.
No, and I appreciate that. And it, and it leads to my, my second and last question. Is that, you know, I, I operate from a position that I assume that you and, and your team are doing everything you can to reduce violence and crime in our city. And in your instance, I mean, in December, you will, you know, be going under your third mayor. And so what else, and, and there may be an expectation that you do something else or do something that you're not doing. What, what is it that you have not done or not doing that all of a sudden with the new mayor coming in, that you can now do to reduce crime and especially reduce gun violence in the city? You're muted, sir.
I think we've done a lot and thank you for that, but there's so much more to do. There has been, you know, I, you know, we had support from this administration, but there was transition. And there was transition into a different mayor. There was transition of people inside the administration. And, you know, we've been building this since we put it into the crime plan last June. But it, it has taken time and we've been working with national experts to bring to Baltimore. And we had to bring, bring on private funding. You heard me talk about it's going to the Board of Estimates. We want to be getting grants from a number of, a number of people and, and, and nonprofit organizations to put with city funding to make this work. And so there, there've been some barriers along the way, but but we're here, but we are here to do the heavy lift of really fixing the core root issues that, that cause it, which in addition to enforcement and our deployment and improving the department from the inside out, is making sure we can actually deal with the addiction, the housing, the education and the skills and lack of jobs. And so, you know, when you put all of that together, that's not just a police department initiative. That's a holistic initiative that, that takes a while to build and that we're, we're building. We've been working on it all this time. I never said it was going to be quick. And yet there is an expectation that we move fast and that we, you know, we, we change this three hundred number. Well, that's, that's what we're working to do with that. You know, that, that's a heavy, heavy lift and it takes time because, you know, as I said, we're changing a culture. We're changing a way of thinking. And we're trying to change the reason why people got to go carry guns in the very first place. And then especially using those guns as we fix the police department also. So there, there, there's a lot there, but, but thank you for that.
No, thank, thank you for, thank you for your service. And, you know, that of all of the men and women in the department. And I was out with about fifty men last night on Pennsylvania Avenue, engaging the young men, helping provide jobs and resources. And we're committed to be your partners and continue to do that through the winter, all through next year. We see, we see your, your goal, your strategy is a part of our goals and strategy. And so, and we know it's a team effort, so and this will probably be the last time that I'll get a chance to, to acknowledge you as, as far as a hearing. So I, I just enjoyed working with you and continue to keep you in my prayers, you and the department. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's been an absolute pleasure and I, I appreciate your, your friendship. I appreciate your partnership and I appreciate your leadership. God bless you and your family.
Thank you. Do any other members of the council or committee have any questions for the department? Nope. Okay, so first off, I do want to also, I'm sorry I wouldn't start with this, but I'll close out with this. I do want to thank you, Commissioner Harrison, and your team for everything that you guys are doing. Certainly, we've seen a tremendous difference from last year to this year at all of the actions you guys have been taking, walking and chewing gum at the same time, implementing the change that's necessary, but also, and most importantly to me that I've seen is how quickly your team has adapted to crime trends. And your colonels have, you know, have been giving the, the weekly briefings and what we've seen is just that there's been a tremendous amount of quick action by your team that I have, I have not seen in my, my first years on the council. But I'm seeing now and it definitely gives me hope and encouragement that, that things are, are going to continue to go in the right direction. My district appreciates that and I know the other districts across the city do. Uh, my district appreciates that, and I know the other districts across the city do. Um, as you know, we've been, uh, we've had a lot of different armed carjackings and, and robberies and um, and some of the issues continue, but there's also been a lot of arrests that have been made and a lot of action taken. It's also been quick action. And that's the most important, um, you know, that, that that happens uh, in the beginning rather than in, in, you know, it takes me back to twenty seventeen when I just joined the council, we had a similar trend. Uh, it took uh, many, many months before the actions that your team has taken in a matter of days. Um, and so I want to thank you guys for that. Also give a special shout out to Michelle, uh, who we all drive absolutely crazy on a day-to-day basis, but uh, she's been excellent at getting us answers, um, which is also why these hearings have been a lot easier uh, than they have been in previous years. So thank you, and uh, thank you to uh, just the entire department who uh, who's there for us on a day-to-day basis. Uh, my Thanksgiving, I will be spending the same way I've spent um, multiple Thanksgivings uh, pretty much every year for the past, I think, seven or eight years now, which is uh, bringing food to the districts, to the officers that are working uh, to thank them for their service.
Thank you. All council and happy Thanksgiving, and God bless and keep you all safe.
All right, thank you. We are now in recess.
Happy Thanksgiving.